Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We'll be getting started here shortly. Okay, it is six thirty. We're gonna go ahead and call the Castle Hills City Council meeting to order and determine to quorum as present. Quorum is present. We will start off with the pledge of allegiance. Chief Zuniga, will you lead us? Thank you, chief. First up, we have citizens to be heard. Mr. Wen. Your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Robert Wen. I live at two oh nine Garden View. I would just like to have a couple of comments tonight about the budget that I noticed the if we look at the proposed voter approval rate fifty-two cents rounded. It's gonna be five point six percent higher than the no new revenue rate from last year forty-nine cents. Also, in reference to Councilman Paul's reference to his comments last council meeting, I looked at the the base rate of what we're working off of in the actual years twenty twenty-two. Instead of the proposed twenty twenty-two. If we look at actuals, it's kind of startling the numbers that are being proposed. Police Department shows shows that it would be a twenty percent increase to go to two point eight million from actual last year. Fire Department four point four percent increase to two million dollars. Street Department at forty percent increase to four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Street Department seventeen percent increase to five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Total proposed seven million, seven hundred, seven millions, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Seven million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. That's eighteen hundred dollars for every citizen in Castle Hills. That's eight point five percent over the actual last year's budget. Payments. So please keep that in mind, y'all's discussion and and decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Okay, next we have the consent agenda. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Joyce. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, council. Next, we have item six point one, discussion of possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero eight dash one six, calling election regarding the issuance certificates of obligation. This should come to no surprise to anybody. I think council had previously shown its intent and desire to go for another round of certificates of obligation so that we can continue to invest in our city through streets and drainage and decades of deferred maintenance and thing by and large, people are happy with what they've seen, which is why brings us to today. And this is, we are within our legal window to call for this election for the November eighth. November, sorry, but call for this to be on the ballot for the November eighth election. That being said, willing to have some discussion or take a motion, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero eight dash sixteen, as stated, calling for an election on the issuance of certificates of obligation.
Thank you, Mr. May. We have a second by Ms. Danes. Before we call for a vote, I did receive an email that I promised to read publicly. So give me one second to pull that up for you. Okay, Ms. Ms. Craig, I'll forward this email to you shortly after this. My name is Todd Herman. I reside with my wife and two small children at one one four North Manton Lane here in Castle Hills, Texas. I purchased my home in twenty thirteen and and am a lifelong resident of Castle Hills, having also grown up on North Manton Lane as a child. Since purchasing our home in twenty thirteen, my home has sustained eight major flooding events, which have been directly attributed to the municipal drainage and road grading on North Manton Lane. These flood events have placed an unbelievable financial burden on my family and have decimated the property value of our home. Through the years, I have worked with both the current and former city managers, as well as former sitting council members and engineers on possible solutions that would rectify the drainage and flooding situation we are experiencing each year. We have, we finally have a solution that will stop the annual flooded events on our home, and I strongly support the passage of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh three dash oh eight B and the ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh eight dash one six. I understand there is opposition to the passage of this ordinance, but I curious but curiously, there have been no solutions or ideas submitted by the opposition. Saying no to ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh eight dash one six while offering up no solutions accomplishes nothing, but acting as a hindrance to progress. It's important to note that these opponents are the very same people that put us in this position we are now in by electing year after year to not spend money on our streets and drainage for the last twenty plus years in favor of lower taxes and political posturing. They kicked the can down the proverbial street each and every time, and the facts clearly show this. These people were multi-term council members for years and accomplished almost nothing while in office other than politically motivating motivated posturing, and they saying they're in action on these very same topics. Streets and drainage are the reason we're faced with budget shortages. Doing nothing is no longer an option as a cost only increases as time passes and closing that we really need solutions in our city that will finally address the streets and drainage issues affecting so many residents of Castle Hills. If we lack the funding to accomplish these goals, then we go out and get it in the most cost effective manner. I applaud our city manager, our city council members, and our mayor for having the fortitude and tenacity to provide real solutions in addressing these issues and encourage others to look past the political rhetoric and vote in support of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh eight dash one six. Counsel? Mr. Isbrand? Okay, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, council. Next up, we have six point two, discussion of possible action on the proposed FY twenty twenty-three budget. Mr. Rafferty.
Mayor, if you want to load that up, please. All right. Thank you, Mayor Council. Tonight mainly for our budget workshop is information to provide you in areas of the budget as we move towards adoption and discuss the proposed budget to figure out and determine some areas of including or not including as we work again towards the adoption of the budget. Just to recap, we've had a couple budget workshops, our third on July twentieth. Cancelled the Tuesday, August second, and then I filed the budget on August fifth and then presented the budget last week, August ninth. The balanced budget at seven million, five fifty-seven, seven forty-one. Again, the basic service is maintained at current levels adequately funded, does not include any personnel, does not include a cost of living adjustment, no increase of healthcare, and then captures the one-time costs of the American Rescue Plan, and then fund balance reserves over six months, which protects the city from future uncertainties. What I wanted to show here was a comparison, total budget. If you look here on the slide, it has the FY adopted budget versus the proposed and shows the difference right now. Last year, we, you know, did not provide any additional personnel in that budget except for a traffic enforcement officer. And then mainly due to the change in the police and fire and public works is the steps and our ladder certification year that they get for being in the department the next year. So those are those increases. If you recall, last year, we addressed Public Works, we raised the bar in that department to be competitive. And so that includes increased cost there. The number of employees sixty-eight in the proposed budget, just to give you an idea, right now, we have ten vacancies right now. And so that'll give you an idea of what and how many employees we currently have right now. So. And then I will address, just, I know a citizen's comment, I'll address Mr. Wen's comments after the meeting in regards to actual versus proposed, because you look at things year to year, actual versus actual. And I'll get with Mr. Wen, because the numbers are a little off on his calculations. City Council provided voter approved tax rate on August ninth. This provided an ad valorem collection of four million fifteen. Below is a breakdown ad valorem collection at the no new rate. And then the no new rate being point four nine four eight three one has an impact to sixty-four versus one seventy-two of the voter approval. What I put there on the slide, as you can see, is the bottom line. That's the change in the ad valorem collections. The proposed budget had the voter approved tax two hundred and thirteen nine forty-nine. And then I put here, city council proposed A and B, which shows the no new revenue rate, which is created of thirty thousand, seven sixty-four. And then the other column there is one twenty-two, five thirty-nine. That's actually the median. That's the median tax rate between no new revenue and voter approved, just to give you an idea what the the median looks like, and then the potential collections from that standpoint. One of the things I wanted to focus on the budget was making sure that the council understood and had an idea of our salaries, salaries across the board. I actually got a good salary from Balcony's Heights that surveyed twelve cities. You have a copy of that at the dais, just for reference. And you know, the the survey focuses on obviously administration, police, fire, and public works. But mainly the areas, police and fireworks, police, fire, and public works that they were looking at. Key positions of interest for us is our police officer. The baseline is forty-seven thousand, nine oh two. And the average in the salary survey is fifty-one thousand, seven fifty. Obviously, we're, you know, as we've discussed, we have ten vacancies. Three of those are police officers. I think we have one or two in the pipeline in the academy. But, uh, you know, Chief Zuniga has been very proactive to recruit in cooperation with bonus and or retention agreements to maintain officers. I put here nineteen thousand, two forty, because this is the number we would have to put into the adopted a budget to ensure that we move our baseline starting police from the forty-seven, nine oh two to fifty-one, seven fifty. This right here is the salary survey that you have. This just breaks down police and fire. And this gives you a good idea of other police positions and other fire positions in all of these cities in the area. And again, the idea is to show you this to make sure we're computer competitive, we recruit and retain our public safety, including our our other employees in the organization. But I've outlined right there, the the average right there being the fifty-one thousand, seven fifty there showing that that is the average of all the cities for the police officer. Again, this is just a snapshot of the survey you have there. Cost of living adjustment. Survey, again, it's at your dais, a copy. We focused on over twenty cities relative to COLAs. What cities are doing with merits and our one-time payments to employees. Survey revealed number of cities are taking create creative approaches to provide employees as it relates to COLA, a combination of annual increases, one-time wage adjustment and or sliding scales based on the average salary within an organization. Right there, I just put the national, the cost of living, and then what cities have employees ever received over the last three years.
Mr. Rafferty, go ahead. Quick question. The national, is that the federal COLA?
That's under the, I found it under the social security. There's an article I left up to your desk that talks about that. I think it's under the and it gives a kind of an idea of what they're looking at for twenty twenty-three, which is closer to over, if not eight to eight to five percent inflation. Again, that was based on the social security cost of living.
Thank you.
Again, if you look at the survey, majority of cities, you know, are trying to go with between four and five percent. When you look at all those cities, there are some two percent, there are a couple three percents from that standpoint. This is the COLA scale I showed last time, again, to give you an idea. And the idea is to show you again what the differences on those tax rate would be, ad valorem collections, and see where we kind of need to be at if we're going to do a certain percentage to employees COLAs this year. One of the things I'm looking at and I'll have for next meeting is actually putting together a sliding scale, the average salary, if you look at all our salaries combined is about fifty-four thousand. The idea would be five percent below the fifty-four thousand and then above the fifty-four thousand, the employees would get four percent. So that might be an idea to bring up sort of the the bottom or the base of the employees and salaries from that standpoint.
Mr. Rafferty, can you repeat that, please?
What's that? So the idea would be that we show a sliding scale that the average salary is about fifty-four thousand. So anyone below fifty-four thousand would be five percent, and then above that would be four percent. And we'll have that cost next time. And next steps, just real quick, we're gonna next Tuesday night, talk about, I'll put together the scenarios that show the different tax rates. I'm actually with staff going back over a couple areas of the budget to where we're actually going to bring down some expenses. Some might be paid out of ARPA. Some actually are going to be just revisited a little bit, but it's actually gonna bring down the total expenses slightly. So I'll have those scenarios for you, and it'll help you as we move forward towards adoption. Budget workshop, like I said, next week, the twenty-third, and we will also talk about seed and American Rescue Plan funds. And then again, September sixth, we have a budget hearing and then a tax rate hearing and budget on September sixth, and then, of course, adoption on September thirteenth. So part of it, again, I wanted to make sure you had all that information to take with you to review. Think about it as we come up with a few scenarios of the budget in combination of what you know, we're looking for towards adoption. You know, my goal is obviously to be closer to the four to five percent for COLAs and to move that police base up to make sure we're competitive. Specifically, that average in twelve the cities that are competing for police officers right now.
Counsel, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rafferty, I wonder if you could just walk through a little bit slower, please.
Oh, no problem.
Slide four, where you compare the adopted budget from twenty-two to the proposed budget. Because I've been curious. You know, as you run down, looking at the different departments.
You said.
Yes, that's the one. Thank you. I caught that, I believe it was police, the the sixty-one thousand dollar change between twenty-two and twenty-three was due to step increases. Is that what?
Step and or anniversary. Is that correct?
Okay.
Okay, same same as fire. And again.
Okay, so fires the same.
Fires the same. And then Public Works as well, now that we've done some changes. Remember, last year, we upped the base of that for our 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 entry level laborer position, we moved that up to be competitive. And then that includes the ones that are getting the step in the next year.
Okay. How about the administration?
Administration.
Went up sixty thousand.
Yeah, that's in combination with port there. That is obviously salaries that, you know, between mine being increased and and others as well in administration had been increased as well through the budget process last year.
Okay, thank you.
And just before I forget, I gave a copy again. It's the analysis of the tax rate from twenty-two to twenty-one. So I've highlighted those areas so you can see the difference in the tax rates between voter approval and no new revenue. So it shows you the difference of the ad valorem collection, and then at the bottom again, what that impact is based on the valuations to the residents. We looked at again, three hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollar home is the average. And then the increase wouldn't be one nine three nine. That impacts it by sixty-four dollar increase.
Mr. May.
Mr. Rafferty, one of the most common comments I've heard from citizens is, well, there are other municipalities that are, you know, kind of counterbalancing the tax rate a little bit because of the increase in the home valuations. But in all honesty, if we were to radically change the rate, some things are gonna have to go. And one of those things that would have to go would be increases COLAs. And we're still below the mean on the police officers. So in another poll, citizens uniformly love to have a strong police force. So when we come back for a final decision, are we gonna have a breakout of what we might have to lose if we take the lower tax rate? Because in years past, one of the common conversations is, well, steady as she goes, let's not do anything radical in raising the rate nor reducing the rate. And I think for me, anyway, that's gonna be the most crucial thing is trying to get my head around, these figures can be a little slippery. So I think it's important for the council to understand if we adopt the lowest possible rate of all the options we consider, what is that gonna cost us? Is it gonna cost us, you know, a whole position, maybe, on the police force? Will it cost them their COLA? Because I'm gonna be on record right now, I'm not, I'm not wanting to do any of those things now with the police force.
Well, Ms. Councilman, just in general, I mean, if you look at the the bottom line, you know, the ad valorem on no new revenue creates thirty thousand. So if we were to make the adjustment in police to address that, that's nineteen thousand. So essentially, you have eleven thousand dollars left to try to come up with for COLAs. And so, you know, what is the priority? Different COLA for, I mean, COLAs for employees at what percentage that might be? Or trying to adjust to compete for an area of the police department, you know, and so we could show, I could show you those things. But just in general, if you think about the no new revenues thirty thousand, and that addresses nineteen thousand to bring up the the base salary for police, again, you've got about eleven or ten to play with.
We are still playing a guessing game, too, about what's gonna come in the door in sales tax revenue. And we don't know where the court fees are going to land. They've been down historically the last couple of years, but the trend is up. So how are you gonna calibrate that to give your final analysis?
Well, I don't think there's a change necessarily in the revenue that's been presented, because, I mean, we're trying to be conservative on determining what that revenue like, but again, sales tax is up, court is up, and you know, we foresee, if you look at the the bottom line there, on there, we, you know, we're projecting in revenue on the there over a hundred thousand in new revenue from this year's alone. So and again, due to the the efficient, due to the vacancies, we are gonna be sort of in a more positive, because we probably won't fill these positions by the end of December, more than likely. So again, looking at the actual number, we won't know until FY twenty-two that more than likely, we were gonna be up in revenue and down on expenses.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty, Mr. Paul.
Mr. Rafferty, the last nine or ten years, our tax rate has been, what, with the exception, of course, of twenty twenty because of that burp in nineteen. What has it been? It's been the point five two?
Point five two, if you.
So it's been, it's been right here, this area.
Yes.
That's what I'm getting at.
You, you, the last year's was point five two four eight nine nine. The voter approved is point five two four four, which is right, point zero zero two.
But my point is historically, that's where it's been, again, with the exception of the fooling around in nineteen and and it hurt us in two thousand and twenty. So ten years or so, I think. So this point five two issue is basically the same as it's been.
And if you look at the tax analysis there, even going with the median at point five zero eight, it's still below twenty-one's tax rate of point five one six zero.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Isbrand?
A couple things. Mr. Rafferty, I think that where we left at the last meeting was that we had asked for a budget to be presented tonight that would be at the no new test rate so that we could get a sense, I think, an answer perhaps to Mr. May's musings on this of what exactly would we see as potential reductions and where? I, I don't see that we have that tonight, but I know that you've been looking at that, and I wonder if you could characterize your assessment so far in in lieu of having something to look at.
So again, if we, you know, have a scenario, as I have put there in the column there, it's council propose A and B. What we'd look at is the bottom line, no revenue rate. Like I said, I'm actually going back on some areas and doing a little sharpen the pencil, shaving some areas that will get us a slightly lower on the expenditure side, which may create a little bit more revenue above that thirty thousand, no new revenue. And then again, showing you a scenario of what the median looks like as a new budget and then the voter approval rates. Because when I do go through the line item expenses, it's gonna raise the two hundred and thirteen thousand, you know, probably about about twenty thousand of what I'm looking at. So I would see a twenty thousand dollar increase on top of all three of those potential ad valorem collection, new budget revenue.
I mean, I, I think it's really important for us to be able to look at these two and see, you know, again, from your perspective of where do we tighten if we need to tighten? And how do we go about managing it? I would respectfully offer a different opinion than you, Mr. May. I don't necessarily see the tax rate that we set as I think you said, one of the things that would have to go if we went with the lower rate is the COLAs. I don't necessarily see that as being the case because the budget, as we have it proposed right now, has the tax rate where it current is currently is, and we don't have COLAs factored into it. And I think that's what's important about looking at the the no new revenue tax rate is, okay, if we determine that we want three, four, five percent, whatever, what's the impact going to be irrespective, first of all, of the tax rate, but then I think looking at and trying to understand the the needs and constraints and the challenges that our residents have right now during this economy to be considerate of that. I think the other point is whether the tax rate is point five two, whatever now versus last year. The reality is that if appraisals are up, the amount of taxes coming in are up. The impact that it has on residents are up. So I think it's incumbent upon us to go through this exercise of looking at if we were to say no new revenue, what impact does that have on budget and what impact would it have if we then said on top of that, we want COLAs or salary increases versus the current tax rate and going through that exercise of asking those questions? Without those numbers here, I think it's really hard to have that discussion. But I think it's something that's well with it, well worth us going through the exercise and that we allocate ample time to have this discussion before we get down to a vote on it. So that's my observation on that. And then going to this twelve-city average, Mr. Rafferty, it looks to me like by and large, outside of administrative positions, but within police and fire, that relatively speaking, we are competitive with the, at least the twelve-city average, except for the position of police officer.
Yeah, I just wanted to be able to give you yeah, an overview of everything, not just focusing.
Sure, sure. Yeah. And and I appreciate that, because it makes me want to ask a couple of questions. The only The only municipality on this list that pays less for a police officer than we do. Is our beloved sister Almost Park down the street. And I'm curious if, if we have any sense of what kind of retention or other challenges that they have with their police officers. Given that their figure of forty six thousand is significantly less than what we offer. So I'd be, I don't know if you have an answer to that, but I'd be curious to know about that.
No, I could follow up, but again, you know, if you look at the cola list. That some of these cities that are doing certain colas and their one-time adjustments, um, some to police and fire, that's obviously going to change. Uh, you know, this, this was actually collectively put together by one city and. Uh, different city managers provided information to get this survey, you know, about, you know, probably June, early June. So everybody could have this in preparation of budget time.
Sure. And then since this is the first time that we've seen this, it's again, kind of hard to absorb. In my simple mind, all these numbers at once, but I, I would like to hear your take on the administrative salaries. Um, because at least through my quick scan of these, I see the twelve city average, um, in a number of cases being, um, notably higher than what we're. Paying, is that a correct assessment?
Uh, that is correct. Um, you know, it looks like we're pretty competitive in the city secretary. Um, area, um, obviously, uh, finance directors, that's been a challenge. Um, and, and actually other cities have been raising salaries to be competitive to hire, um, you know, um, finance directors. Um, you know, we don't have community development, public works here, um, that's obviously under in comparison to the average. Um, police chief and fire chief are, are below those averages as well in comparison to other cities.
Yeah, and, and I think, I don't know whether staring at this before our next meeting will be helpful or not. But I think it's worth also looking at these in terms of what are the sizes of the departments of some of these? So, uh, I'll, I'll just make something up and with all due respect to our public works director. You know, the, the twelve city average is about fifteen thousand less than what we're paying if I look at this correctly. But when I look at some of the bigs, big salaries that are here, they're in municipalities that have disproportionately larger. Numbers of residence, territory, work, staff, whatever. So, uh, this isn't quite an apples to apples comparison to give us the clue. But I think if there are maybe some that are closer to apples to apples, it would be helpful to look at them. As we continue with this discussion about salaries.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, one segment of public works being sanitation, you know, most of these cities probably do automation. You know, except for as we looked at last year, you had Alamo Heights and Terrell Hills and Almost and us are still with, um, you know, municipal. Um, guys on back of trucks.
Right, right. But I, I think too that, for example, I, I would guess that Almost Park is about half the size of population that we are. So, um, it might impact the number of employees as well as the responsibility of the duty. So again, I think that just looking at the average does, it gives us a clue, but I don't think it necessarily gives us the clarity. That would be most helpful when we look at this, because I think if we're going to talk about salary increases. I really think we need to be open to looking across the board. Uh, what the needs are here to, um, recruit and retain quality staff at all levels. Not just the police department or fire department or public works, but across the board. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to have that discussion with a little bit better sense of how we compare to cities in similar size that, uh, to us.
And again, the idea of, I have to say tonight was to provide you with this information. Sure. To review, and then we come back with, with some options or scenarios that would help get us closer towards adoption.
Right.
As Mr. May said, and as you said, to figure out if there's things we need to, uh, take out, remove, or make changes in the budget to add to.
And, and that kind of goes to my last question then, um, the voter, uh, the voter approved tax rate. You've, you've presented a budget proposal to us that is balanced based on the voter approved tax rate. That's without colas or salaries. So are we inevitably then speaking to the reality of needing to cut budget? Somewhat to be able to afford to look realistically at colas and or salary increases or different pay scale?
Yeah. And again, I, from a salary perspective, those changes, as we talked about from year to year. Um, you know, those changes are, are majority being, like I said, step certification ladder. I mean, those are things that, you know, we're, we're not essentially can't cut out of the budget. I mean, we can look at operational line items, um, and see what we can do. But, um, I'd hate to go too deep of a cut to where, you know, the apartments can't function.
Sure. And I don't think that's anyone's intention here, at least up here. Um, but the voter approved tax rate of point five two two five four four. Accommodates a budget of seven point five five seven million dollars, which is what your proposal is. But now if we're talking about putting on top of that, um, pay raises, scale adjustments, colas, whatever the option may be that we go at. The money has to come from somewhere. So again, without suggesting that we're cutting bone here. Are we in fact necessitating that we look at reductions of other? Potential expenses in order to be able to afford to do that?
Mr. Rappley, can, can I jump in real quick? Just to, stop me if I'm wrong, but with the, you proposed on the second page of this big one. Uh, we would have a surplus of two thirteen, two hundred and thirteen thousand, which we could plug money in to fund.
Unbudgeted revenue.
Unbudgeted revenue, uh, to plug in colas and that's kind of our delta. As opposed to going with the no new revenue, which would, uh, net thirty thousand.
Uh, and, and I appreciate that. I, I think my apprehension about that would be that unbudgeted revenue is unbudgeted. It's not going to happen year after year. So however, we're, you know, when we make the commitment to adjust salaries or do whatever. We're making a continuing commitment to it, not just based on where we're going to end this year. So that's why I wanted to try to understand what the thought process is of whether it's going to be this year then or next year. How we would anticipate paying for some of this if, um, we're relying on unbudgeted revenue this year to make it a balanced budget. And these are, I'm not suggesting that's what the intention or anything is. I just want to ask these questions so that when we get numbers in front of us, we could have a real earnest look at what's it actually going to cost? Now and in continuing years, um, as we look at the, the needed adjustments. And I do believe they are needed adjustments in the salary scales that we have in the city. Thank, thanks.
Yeah. And, and again, Councilman, I wanted to emphasize that the, the idea tonight was to give you all, um. Um, bunch of information, uh, to review, and then we come back next Tuesday with some scenarios.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Got one more quick question, Mr. Rappley. At the bottom of that page showing on the screen, you have number of employees. Sixty eight current vacancies, ten. Now, are we saying there's sixty eight positions? We're not saying there's sixty eight plus ten positions, are we?
There's sixty eight positions that are in the adopted budget.
That's clarified. It makes a difference. I'm looking at it.
Yes. No, it's not seventy eight, Mr. Paul.
Thank you.
Do you have any other comments, Council?
Okay, uh, Mayor, just real quick, I, and I give a quick scenario to, to Councilman Esbrand. And, and you know, the reason why, if you look on there, um, specifically with. The median, uh, tax rate, you know, it's a lesson in impact that dollar to, um, the residents based on those valuations. However, it does give you a little more revenue. So. For instance, the scenario you put together, you look at the three percent cola, it's a cost of a hundred and four thousand. Um, we want to improve the, the baseline of salary for a police officer, eighteen, nineteen thousand. That essentially gets us there, right there, you know? But it doesn't get us for maybe five percent on the cola side. So just to give you an idea.
And, and on this, what is the, uh, impact at the median?
At the median, it's, it's one eighteen.
One eighteen.
On the tax analysis, I've highlighted it here.
Okay.
So instead of sixty four, it's one eighteen. So roughly thirty six, eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
Which is less of a number between one eighteen and one seventy two.
So, um, kind of tying all this together and putting my personal opinions in there. I, I think the idea of getting the no new revenue budget is a good idea. To let us figure out what exactly we're willing to sacrifice to get down to that amount. Having talked to the residents, having had people reach out, as I'm sure all of y'all have. I think it's important that we're providing value and that we're not cutting off our nose to spite our face. I don't think it does any good for us to save tax revenue or tax costs for the residents of which we all pay. To not have to be able to, not be able to provide police and fire and if that means cutting, um. Maintenance in certain areas of the city. I, I think it's, we just have to be really mindful of what a potentially hundred dollars a year increase. Is going to cost versus what we can do with that and provide back as an investment into the city. I'm not a big advocate of us hoarding this money. To position ourselves better. I'd much rather us be able to offer more and show the residents a value for that. I mean, going back to, uh, Mr. Rappley's original side, I think that we're being. Exceptional fiscal stewards of the city to have only a one point one four percent increase. When we have a five point nine percent. Uh, I guess inflation rate, if you want to put it that way, the colas, uh, for FY twenty twenty two. The last thing that I want to say, and I think everybody said it, but I just wanted to put a little bit more context to it. I think it's really important that we pay attention to our starting rate for our patrol officers, uh. I believe that we all feel like we're a little bit insulated in the city of Castle Hills. But if there's anything that the recent history has shown us is that. Well, we are insulated and we have great first responders. That crime does not know, no, not know any limits. We've had the shooting at Blanco, we had shootings across Blanco at the gym. Just this weekend on Mr. May's walk, the vehicle rolled over and the gentleman took off running because he was wanted. Somebody actually, y'all don't know this, and I'm discussing, uh, disclosing this publicly. Somebody, um, went into my garage and stole my tools sometime between this week and last Monday. It's just the reality that we're facing, and I think it's important that we're able to provide. That level of the caliber of service that our residents have come to. Expect and deserve, and that we remind ourselves that it's the value. The extras, the public works, the fire and the police that make us a city that we are. Because while we could potentially save some money by privatizing or going with county services. The value add is in having these services. Ourselves and being able to do the trash pickup in the alley, because some people don't want to see the cans. And being able to have two minute response time for police and fire. I think that's the difference between Castle Hills being a great community. And Castle Hills being a great city. So I would encourage, implore council to figure out how we could do more and make those dollars go further. So, Rappley.
Uh, just want to say, Council, what you have in front of you, where you, you see the difference there highlighted is the last page of the general fund budget. I just provided that to you because none of the rest of the actual general fund changed. But when we look at scenarios, those will change the bottom line and have scenarios next week. So just wanted to have, make sure you had a copy of that.
So, thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have any other comments, Council? Okay. Uh, do we have any announcements? Okay, uh, Mr. Joyce, please.
More announcement, I just wanted to remind everybody that the Parks and Protests Commission is going to have a town hall. On Wednesday evening, August thirty first, to review proposed improvements to the commons. And we have a design that's, uh, I think very exciting and we look forward to input from the folks. August thirty first, six thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. May?
Uh, just a couple of announcements. We are going back with our historical society meetings, uh, this next Saturday at ten AM. We're going to be down a few members, uh, one of our regulars is on a rattlesnake hunt and two others are on vacation. Um, this has always been open to the public. I'm in a social media. Uh, we have a fun project, uh, we have a donation from a citizen on a teardown on Fox Hall. Very old structure, these look to be nineteen twenty to about nineteen fifties. And I need help in identifying who these people are and how they're, uh, connected to our community. Uh, and then we also have a mixer coming up a week from Wednesday at the Tai Topaz, starting at five thirty, uh, to seven. And we're going to have one of our local law firms, the partner, uh, is going to speak on what. Businesses should be worried about and maybe how they could avoid litigation.
Thank you, Mr. May. Thank you, Mr. Joyce, for your work. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May?
So moved.
You have a second? Second by Mr. Paul, all in favor? Unanimous seven seventeen, the meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you for joining us.